It is 7:08 PM, so I'm going to go ahead and call this public hearing in session, or it's called a meeting, I guess, to order. And before anything else, I do need to read a statement about remote participation, so if you'll bear with me. Pursuing the Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Adams' Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. Members Rick Blanchard, member and Vice Chair Jim Bush, and myself, Chair Christine Hoyt, are here in the room on the phone, participating via remote participation from the Board of Selectmen is member Joe Novak. No other in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. The only other person here in the room is Donna Seaman, who is the Director of Community Development. However, every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. We had posted today's agenda accordingly. I think most of you got it hand-delivered, I think, by member Novak, so I appreciate Joe's work on that. And on that included the call-in information for today's meeting, allowing you to participate. However, if anyone would like a recording of this meeting, we could also provide that following the meeting and the hearing. So, and just since I have the audience, and it's a good, well-attended public body right now, Zoom and phone number information is posted with all of our meetings, as we're still going through the remote participation phase of all of our public meetings. So I appreciate that you're here. And I appreciate Tom's note letting me know that he can hear just fine. So, I'm just going to read off who I believe is here, and if I don't hear your name, if you can let me know who you are. So I will ask you to unmute yourselves at this point, and then I'll have you mute yourselves for the presentation, and then we'll do some questions and answers. So I do have, let's see, I have Gwen Carrity from Berkshire Regional Planning.
Yeah.
I see Scott Lee from the Viking.
Hi.
Hi, nice to see you. Ed St. John, legal counsel.
Yes, I'm here.
Yep. Are you, we're probably here as a small business owner, I would assume.
And also observing, yep.
Excellent, thank you. Patricia Mullins from BRPC.
Yes, I'm, I'm here.
You're here, thank you. Eason Opel from the Edge Fitness.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. I have Lori, there's Lori, from Merrick High Salon.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, Lori. Tom Decker, he says he's here, I saw him on video, Peach Gun Shop, right? I think so, okay. He's having some sound issues. And then I have, yeah, he's here, thank you. I have Paula Randall. Paula, can you hear? That's the name that shows up on the screen, so I just want to make sure that that's through here. I also have a Tammy, but I can't unmute.
It's me, Tammy Daniels.
I thought it might be you, Tammy Daniels. So Tammy's here from I, Berkshire, thank you. And I have a Mark and Stephanie. Mark and/or Stephanie, if you could just state your name and your business for attendance I will reach out to them directly and get some more information. And I think that we are good to go. So, we are here for a public hearing to discuss the proposed regional application for funding to the Massachusetts Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 program, which has been appropriated through the CARES Act of 2020 and awarded to the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development by HUD via amendment to the existing DHCD CBBG Fiscal 2019 One-Year Action Plan. So under the proposed application, the Town of Adams will serve as the lead community. So this hearing is to hear a little bit more about the, I guess, the specific contents of the program, how the Town of Adams would be the lead community, and how it could help businesses such as the ones that are on this call. With that, do we need a formal vote to go into public hearing? Or no, because we just called it to order, right? I think so, yes, okay, so we're good. The procedural thing's right, with remote participation, so I apologize. So I'm going to turn things over to Donna Seaman, who is in the room. I'm going to flip my camera over, so that you'll stop looking at me, and you'll see Donna on camera. And I'm going to ask that all of you mute yourselves at this point, so we can hear Donna, and then when we open up the questions, I will have you unmute yourselves and state who you are, just so that the others in the room with me know who's talking. I can obviously see you, but they won't be able to. So with that, oh, Donna, you're on.
Okay, thank you. About two weeks ago, the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, or DHCD, issued a notice of funding availability and guidance about approximately 19.65 million in funding under the Massachusetts Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 Program, as Christine mentioned, under the CARES Act of 2020. Of this, DHCD has established that approximately 9.6 million made available to municipalities proposing to offer microenterprise assistance and/or assistance to public social services specifically to address the conditions related to impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Municipalities may apply for one or both activities, but awards will be limited to 400,000 per community. In the notice, regional applications were strongly encouraged. And as we discussed previously with the selectmen, we are proposing a regional application to be administered jointly by Berkshire Regional Planning Commission and the Town of Adams. It would focus on the northern Berkshire region. The application will be designed to assist microenterprises, those who qualify under the low-to-moderate-income, limited clientele, national objective criteria within the 13-town governments of the northern Berkshires. The regional application will seek up to $850,000 in CDBG CV funds and serve the communities of Adams, Cheshire, Clarksburg, Dalton, Florida, Hancock, Hinsdale, Lanesboro, New Ashford, Peru, Savoy, Williamstown, and Windsor. Under the proposed application, the Town of Adams would serve as the lead community. And the reason for that is CDBG is provided to municipalities, regional entities are not allowed to be applicants. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to solicit public input on the specific contents of the proposed regional application for CDBG CV funds. Under the proposed program, the term "microenterprise" means a commercial enterprise that has five or fewer employees, at least one of whom owns the business. A microenterprise assistance activity may qualify under the low-to-moderate national income objective if the activity either assists, one, the owner of the microenterprise, who is low-to-moderate income. And if you remember, we've used that term in a lot of other programs, our housing rehab program, most recently, we discussed it in terms of our 40R project proposal. LMI, or low-to-moderate income, is less than or equal to 80% of the area mean/median income, based on family size. And we can talk about, you know, what that translates into actual income. So it would either assist the owner of a microenterprise, who is a low-to-moderate-income person, or the microenterprise would have to serve a low-to-moderate-income neighborhood or a community-wide area in which at least 51% of the residents are low-to-moderate-income persons. Up to $10,000 per business may be provided through the program to qualifying businesses adversely impacted by COVID-19. However, supporting documentation will be required of each microenterprise applicant to demonstrate need. Lesser grant amounts, say $2,500 or $5,000, may be made, depending on the level of that need and the relationship of need to COVID-19 impacts, as well as factors. A major purpose of the grant is to assist businesses in remaining open and/or to assist them in stimulating and changing their businesses during this time of COVID-19. The following uses would be allowable: to help with rent, to help with staffing, to help pay utilities, other general business costs. Program funds could not be used, however, for major equipment purchases, purchase of real property, construction activities, business expansion, or lobbying. The grant deadline has now been extended until Friday, June 12, so that helps. We have begun working with BRPC staff on the application narrative, and I hope to be in a position, over the next couple of days, to send out to our businesses here in Adams that we think would be eligible, a preliminary application. This will help us first gauge interest level, and it will help determine how much need is out there. And all of that helps to go into the application narrative. Some of the other larger towns, like Williamstown and Dalton, are going to be doing similar outright outreach to microenterprises within their communities. That just gives an overview. We're certainly happy to answer any questions that the board or the public may have. So, open it up for questions.
Okay. Any questions from the board, at this point?
I have no questions.
Okay. Joe, I know you're on the phone, so I'll, did you have any questions or any comments that you wanted to make before I open it up to the public?
No, I do not.
Okay. Thank you. So, we'll try to have some order here. If you do have a question, if you want to unmute yourself and state your name, I'll try to control any chaos.
I'll ask a question.
Tammy.
Yeah, this is Tammy. Who will determine who gets the grants? Is there going to be a committee? Is it the Community Development Block Grant Committee?
Yes, this is still being worked out. You know, also on the call is Pat Mullins with Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. Pat and I are developing the application together with assistance from others. But that's the way we anticipate Berkshire Regional Planning would be the entity that any microenterprise that is interested in the program would complete an application and send it in to BRPC. They would receive the applications and screen those applications to make sure they're complete and they're initially eligible. One of the big parts of this will be to determine if the business is income-eligible. Again, making that determination of low-to-moderate income, and if either the owner or the business serves a low-to-moderate-income neighborhood. So that will be coming to the Town of Adams, and our staff will help with those determinations. But in terms of making final decisions on which businesses within the 13 towns are awarded funds, and how much of those funds, we would have a committee. It would be representative, not every community likely would have a table. It needs to be nimble, it needs to make decisions quickly, but it would be a joint decision, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Pat, is there anything that you wish to say or add on that?
No, I think that you covered that very, very, very well. That's fine, that's good.
Thanks, Pat.
I have a question. This is Lori with Merrick High Salon.
Hi, Lori.
Hi, Donna. I'm just wondering, what are we looking at as far as a timeline goes? If the applications are going to have to be due in, like, say by June 12, what are we looking at as far as, like, when we know if we'll be approved, or if we're...
So, the town's application, or the regional application, needs to be submitted to the state by June 12. And they have indicated to us on previous, you know, we've had, I think Pat's participated in a number of Zoom calls, in which state officials have tried to provide additional information. And they've indicated during those calls that they hope to get the money out quickly. So what we're hoping to do, we're not going to wait and see if we have money, we're going to activate this and keep our fingers crossed that we will receive some funding, so that when we do receive the notice of award, we'll be able to act quickly, get the information out to our businesses. So we're hoping in the interim, say, two, three, four, five weeks, before the state formally gives us, you know, an award and contracts, that we would be in contact with you, we'd be working together on your applications, clarifying information needs, et cetera.
Excellent, very good, thank you.
Sure. Other questions? And I think Chris just joined us. Is that Chris from Coffee Liberation?
It is.
Hi, nice to hear your voice.
Yeah, actually, I have a question. And I'm sorry that we were a little late, but I guess my question would be, as far as grants are concerned, what would be the grace period, I guess? By that, I mean, I'm assuming a grant would have to be paid back within a certain amount of time?
No, this, under this program, it is not a loan program, Chris, it is a grant. As long as the business adheres to the program requirements, the money is free. So, we, you know, we're going to be working on that. I mean, it's basically, obviously, if, you know, I think, and I'm trying to think, in cases where you wouldn't fulfill it, it's mostly how you're going to direct the money. So as long as you're saying, "I'm going to use the money for rent, I'm going to use the money for staffing," and you're not using it for lobbying, then it would be an outright grant, and there would be no payback requirement.
And what kind of application do you think we'll be looking at for that?
We're trying to keep it simple. Obviously, we don't, you know, we want to limit the amount of information that we need to review, and Berkshire Regional Planning staff needs to review, but we do have to go through a process of determining eligibility. So there will be some income information. We'll have more out soon about what kinds of documents you need to start pulling together. And then think about, if you were to receive a $5,000 grant, a grant of $8,000, how you would most need to use that money, because most likely, you'll be required to do a short narrative of how you intend to spend the money.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. Yeah, I would assume that they're, most likely, they're getting the information together now as preliminary anyway, so they don't necessarily have it.
Other questions?
Scott Lee here.
Hi, Scott.
This is microbusiness, is this sole proprietorship only, or does commercial corporations qualify?
I wasn't quite sure of the question, Scott.
Does a corporation qualify as a microbusiness?
Yeah, it's my understanding, it's not how you set it up legally, it's how, the number of employees, and that you, well, you have to be, I guess I see your point, you have to be the owner, so...
Well, I'm the sole owner of all the shares of the corporation.
Okay.
But that's what I'm confused about.
Pat, I would ask if...
You know, I actually have not heard any discussion about how, about how the company's structure entering into it at all, as far as I understand. It just needs to have five or fewer employees, including the owners. And I also want to point out that if you have lost employees, and we're previously a business that, say, had seven employees, but you had, you've lost a couple, then you could, you could still qualify based on the, your current situation. But how the business is legally structured, I don't think that that is a concern.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. I have a question from Tom Decker, if I can ask that, that's okay. So Tom is asking, he says, "At the beginning of this pandemic, just prior to the closure of nonessential businesses, the state offered assistance to small businesses but excluded firearms businesses from eligibility. Will this be the same?"
Yes, definitely it is.
Unfortunately, Tom, that's where I'm hearing, I think Tom for...
There are some exclusions in addition to that. Liquor stores, the shops that sell marijuana, that sort of thing, are not included.
Okay. I mean, I'll take a minute and just read all of the...
Sure, why don't you, because it's a little bit surprising.
Okay. So it's real estate rentals, sales businesses, businesses owned by persons under age 18, businesses that are chained, liquor stores, weapons firearms dealers, lobbyists, or cannabis-related businesses.
And I have another question, hopefully I didn't, I didn't miss this. As far as the, what it can be used for, does that include any renovations at all?
Unfortunately, no, this program does not allow construction activity.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, I mean, certainly, I can think of probably about four or five things that we could use it for, one of them being insurance or things like that, so...
Right, I mean, I think if there are, there are certain things, like if you needed to put up, you know, a protective...
Plexiglass.
Right, some plexiglass or something to protect servers, or if you have to buy PPE to, for, you know, to keep your staff safe, those are all eligible, except...
All right.
Other questions? Oh, Jim, you had one, sorry.
I have a question, it was probably on here and I missed it. Do the applications, do they come to see you, Donna, or do they come to VR, the CBGG?
No, well, the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission will be the recipient of all the applications. But we will be providing outreach to our businesses, as the other towns will be providing outreach to their businesses, with not only the application, but then how to complete the application, and then certainly, you know, the web address of where to complete the application.
So that'll be done within town hall, or do they have to make an appointment with you?
I think most of this we can do, you know, digitally, I mean, just, you know, I've already had a couple of businesses, you know, three or four businesses reach out, and so I think if we can keep communicating via, you know, email, and then certainly telephone, I think we're going to try to do as much of that as possible. And keep the application simple, too, so it's an easy online application that then could be forwarded to Berkshire Regional with probably attachments, different documentation, so...
So when we receive those applications, we'll be reviewing them, and if we see any gaps in the information that you provided, we'll give you a call, and we'll work with you to get those applications to the point where you have everything that you need in terms of your, determining that your business itself is eligible. And then the Town of Adams will work on the income eligibility aspect of things, once we've done that original screening. So really, the plan here is for us to work together and collaborate, which is a big part of what DHCD wants to see happening. And they also want to be certain that the funds are available to all the communities out there. There were 314 communities in Massachusetts that were eligible for this grant, and they made it very, very clear that they did not want to have to review 314 applications. But if someone is income-eligible and runs a microenterprise, they want everyone to have an opportunity to apply. So while we fully expect that the majority of the applications are going to come from the towns that have more, you know, commerce, such as Adams, and Dalton, Cheshire, and Williamstown, we are also going to be looking at applications that come in from some of the other towns. There'll be far fewer, we expect, but in that way, we're trying to cover all of North Berkshire County. There'll be another grant that will serve South Berkshire County. So the Town of Lenox will be the lead community on that one.
Other questions or comments?
There are none.
Can you flip the camera?
Who, yes, a grant in your, like I said, we put plexiglass up, you have to hire a specific person or company to do that, or can, like, Do-ron Hall and do it, and that's perfectly okay.
Is that Allison?
Yes, yes.
I thought, they were asking about whether it would cover plexiglass to be installed as, I guess, the PPE.
Well, Donna, good. Yeah, it's just, it's just a matter of, we hire anybody that you want within the area. I'm assuming the answer is yes, but...
Right, I mean, Pat, you know, I, where do you think that the line is drawn on no construction activities, but then, I mean, it seems like one of the things businesses will definitely need to do is provide those safety measures, and, you know, a business owner can't necessarily do that work, as the caller said, they're going to have to hire a contractor. Where do you think the program might lie on that?
So, it clears, the NOFA, the Notice of Funding, clearly says no construction, but it also says operating expenses, and if in order to operate, you have to have that, you know, especially, you know, due to COVID-19, if that's the impact, I think that that could be considered. How you arrange to have the work done is, unlike, when we have a CDBG housing rehab program, and we, administering the program, have a hand in determining who does the work, that won't be the case here. We're not looking, we're not looking to supervise your projects, but I think it is a fine line between no construction whatsoever, and I'm happy to look into that a little bit further before the application goes in and ask that question of DHCD, just so we feel more comfortable with the answer that we're given. But it seems to me that if that's a part of your operating, you know, something you need to do in order to continue operating, that it ought to be eligible, eligible expense.
Yeah, I would, I would just say that I think, I think that's a very likely expense that businesses will likely incur, so we will try to have specific guidance when we do the outreach on that very question.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Anyone we haven't heard from? I like having the video. You can always shake your head and, oh, it's... It's been so long since I've seen so many of you.
Been a long three months, two months, almost three months.
Yeah. It's been a long few months.
It is. It's been kind of nice. I've been able to enjoy our yard and...
Well, good. Good. Anything from Rick or Jim? Joe, anything you wanted to add or any questions?
No.
Okay.
Way to go, Joe.
Those are your friends, Chris and Allison from Coffee Liberation.
Okay. Hey, how are you doing?
Hi, Joe. I'm assuming that you left this on our door.
Yes, I did.
I see. I knew it. Thank you.
Yep. Joe went around town and he, he put flyers, I think, on all of your doors and then some. So I really, really appreciate your work on that, Joe.
Allison says she has a question.
I don't know. This is totally related to this, but getting back to the plexiglass, which I do think is a real good idea, especially for us because we're so close to the door and it's so small in there. Do you people have any sources or can you help us at all to find where these, you know, where this plexiglass, where these setups are located for us to be even? I mean, I have no idea where businesses are getting these plexiglass shields or I know the banks have them and such like that, but is there any information anybody has going down the line where to find those things?
Oh, one person I will talk to is the town clerk who had to make recent purchases to allow town voting to go forward today. And my understanding was she purchased several plexiglass panels. So we'll pass that information on to you, Allison.
Thank you.
Sure. And Christine, I would just say, any of the businesses listening in Adams, you have the notice, you have my email on that notice. It would be helpful just to reach out to me, just so I start to have your emails. So then when I do have that application, preliminary application, I can send it out to you easily and more expeditiously.
We will do that tomorrow.
Okay, great. One last call. I just want to make sure everybody has a chance to ask questions or be heard. So if you are muted and you would like to speak, you know, please unmute yourself and, or if you're having trouble unmuting yourself, let me know. Sorry. I'm still here. I just hit the wrong video button. And then I just wanted to note, Donna, that Mark and Stephanie Abrams from Abrams Hospitality Marketing in Lanesboro is also on the call.
Wonderful.
And I have some contact information here that they...
Okay.
I think that we have everybody's emails and contact information so that we can follow up.
Well, as a Lanesboro resident, I'll send it to you, Mark and Stephanie.
I really want to let you know that I appreciate people being on this call. Community Development Block Grant, as I'm sure Donna has said many times, is very, very interested in community participation. And it's just very helpful for us to have people and to talk over the project that we're anticipating, the grant that we're anticipating submitting. And you've asked some good questions, a couple of which we don't have immediate, 100% immediate answers for, but we'll get them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, I won't keep you all night.
Well, I have an unrelated question.
Okay, go ahead.
Haven't seen anything about the rail trail as far as its construction. Has that resumed?
So it's my understanding that they are finishing up paving Lanesboro to Cheshire section of the trail and they will start work on the north end of the trail no sooner than June 15th, is what, is what I heard, I think Thursday or Friday of last week.
Well, I noticed outside of our building today that there was a marker for the gas line. So I was wondering if that had anything, but I'm assuming maybe it did.
Yeah, so they finished up earlier than expected. So I'm hoping that's the case on this end. We'd like them to get started, do it and get out so that we can use our trail. But my understanding is June 15th would be the earliest. And for those who aren't familiar with that project, that would be from the Cheshire side, that where the cloud is or what is that name? Cheshire DPW to the visitor center in Adams. But the portion of the trail that is north of the visitor center will remain open. That is not being touched. So that's 1.7? No. What's that additional?
I think that's 1.4.
1.4 miles of trail that will still be open in Adams. So good question.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else, boys, about us, I guess, on the call? This is like an asset selection question tonight, right? I've got, I've got four of us here.
I need to close the public hearing.
Yeah, you do have to close the public hearing portion.
All right. Where can we get Lysol?
Right.
That I can't help you with.
I don't know how the hell people are supposed to open their businesses, especially restaurants. You don't have Lysol or disinfectant. So if you can't find it, silly.
B&amp;G Restaurant Supply will have Lysol.
But that's...
B&amp;G Restaurant Supply has lots of PPE.
Excellent. That's good to hear.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
All right.
Should we need a motion or...
A motion to close the public hearing.
A motion, we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Outset the night.
Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to vote? So the public hearing is closed and I will take a motion to adjourn. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Okay. Excellent. Well, thank you very much, everyone. Hopefully, you all will take well. And if you should contact any of us, I know our information is on the website, but yeah. We hope to be in touch with you all real soon.
Have a good night.
Yes, thank you so much.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
All right, Chris, bye, Allison.
Bye-bye.
I have an everything available. I missed that Sunday morning.
Yeah.